Good evening. Before we get started, I'd like to remind people this meeting is being recorded. Your participation will be your consent to appear on the town's YouTube channel. At this time, if you have a cellphone or other electronic device, please place it on mute or turn it off. Thank you. I'd like to call to order the February 22nd, 2024 meeting of the Culver Town Council. Roll call, please. Present. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its command, which stands one way now, united as one, with liberty and justice.
The fact that you could cite years before and decisions made and you showed such professionalism in controlling the room with some controversial cases at times, you're just a class act. I know you were a great math teacher, but you're on some really great precedent with the DCA.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the plan commission appointment. Is that my appointment?
It is. It's the council president.
It's my pleasure to appoint John Houghton as a new member of the Culver Plan Commission. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the public hearing of ordinance 2024-002 rezoning certain property within the jurisdiction of the town of Culver and its two-mile boundary, better known as 16323 Redwood Road. And I'll read this briefly. An ordinance rezoning certain property within the jurisdiction of the town of Culver and its two-mile boundary. Or as the Culver Commission, excuse me, Culver Plant Commission, after legal notice and public hearing, has favorably recommended to the Culver Town Council by a vote of six ayes and zero nays and no abstentions to properly rezone parcel 52,000 or 211. Then there's six zeros, one, zero, 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 one, three, commonly known as 16323 Redwood Road in Culver. From its current zoning of suburban S1 to agriculture A1, whereas the Culver Town Council, having received and reviewed said recommendations and after conducting a public hearing on February 2000 or February 22nd, 2024, therefore believes the said rezoning is in the keeping of the interest of Culver zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan. We have to have a public hearing.
You need to open the public hearing.
All right, I'd like to open the public hearing regarding ordinance 2024-002.
I'll motion to open the hearing.
Ms. Monroe makes a motion. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Githens. 6:35.
Want to call for the vote, all in favor?
Yes, all in favor of opening a public hearing. I'm opposed, same sign. Public hearing's open. Anyone have any comments? Counsel?
Saying nothing.
I have.
Nobody online has commented? Nobody online has a comment?
Anybody online?
If you have a comment, it'll be read. If no one has comments, public. Yeah, I'm reading this on behalf of Steve Gorski. Considering the switching from the S1 to A1, Wayne is in Florida and will not be present tonight. That's why he's not here. The TRC and the Plan Commission both gave favorable approvals for the rezoning. Wayne states that in 2013, the zoning of his property changed from A1 to S1. Wasn't sure why that happened. This was done by the town of Culver. And he was at Florida during the time that it was switched. When we look at the property around the area, it's all agricultural A1 due to last kind of remnant of that S1 switch. He plans on growing crops and hayfields there. We would like all his ground to be zoned A1 and consistent with the pre-existing grounds around him. Summary.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have any comment?
Close the public hearing.
Ms. Monroe moves to close the public hearing. I have a second. Second by Mr. Githens. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Public hearing closed at 6:37. Now therefore be ordained by the Culver Town Council and the town of Culver, Indiana as follows, and I won't go through all this. I have a motion to approve ordinance 2024-002. It's been moved by Ms. Monroe. I have a second. Mr. Neer, seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Passed and adopted by the Culver Town Council, Town of Culver, on the 22nd day of February 2024.
Technically on the first reading. Do you need a second reading?
Oh.
And then our.
Has that been reprinted? Okay, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I will motion to suspend the rules on second read and advise that we pass on second read.
Ms. Monroe moves that we suspend the rules and approve on second and third read of a second.
Yeah, I will add third read to that, Mr. Hovenger.
All right, Ms. Monroe. For the second. Mr. Neer is a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Approved on second and third read. Okay. Next on the agenda is the first read of ordinance 2024-002. Well, we've done that. I'm sorry. First reading of ordinance 2024-003, an ordinance amending the town code regarding council meetings. And before we get into this, Mr. Cerisi, do you have any comment?
So this was, I just put this together to reflect the proposed agenda changes that Kevin had suggested a couple of meetings ago, and that also would make a change to the existing town code references, the old meeting dates, and this just changed it to say that the town council will meet twice a month for regular meetings at a time that is agreed upon by the council so that and with future councils or this group, you know, in years to come wants to change to accommodate every schedule, we don't have to make a change in the code.
Thank you, Sean.
Counsel, any comments? Ms. Monroe?
I motion to approve on first read the ordinance 2024 hyphen zero zero three.
Ms. Monroe moves to first read of ordinance 2024-003. A second, please. A second by Mr. Githens. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Pass.
Given everyone voted yes, I'll motion to suspend the rules on second and third read and suggest we pass the ordinance.
Ms. Monroe makes a motion to suspend the rules and approve on second and third read. A second to the motion, please. Mr. Neer, seconds. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Approved on first, second, and third read. Good time. Dunes update.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody. The town of Culver met with Alan Collins and Burke Richardson on Thursday, February 15th. We discussed the rescheduling of the bond closings as well as the upcoming TRC and planning committee reviews. The bonds will be rescheduled in March pending the successful review of both the TRC as well as the Planning Commission. The TRC has scheduled a special meeting on Thursday, February 29th at 10:00 a.m. They will be reviewing the infrastructure, including water, sanitary, and storm, and they will be making the recommendation to the town of Culver and the council. At that meeting, Scott Siple of Midwestern, an engineer that we've employed and has been vetting the project for us the duration that we've been in negotiations with the developer, will be there and has been asked to review the engineering as well as be present there for a consultant for the TRC. There will be also a work session for the Planning Commission Tuesday, March 12th at 6:30 to review the developers' plans and to make their recommendations to the town council as well. They will be following up with the regular Planning Commission meeting that later that month in which they will vote at that time to either favorably or unfavorably for the town council's consideration. Currently, that's the dunes update. I am encouraged. It seemed very productive conversation last week, and they seem to be very much so on board with what the town is asking them to do in terms of the engineering. It's encouraging to hear that they are looking into providing that high water relief in the north, and they're accounting for that, and they're going to bring that to the TRC as well. So they're following pretty closely to what Mr. Siple's been telling them. So it's been a productive conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
As long as you're on the soapbox, go ahead.
All right.
Town manager report.
Yes, sir. We're going to begin the evening with quotes that I've received. The Indiana Telephone Network has provided us with a quote to redo our phone system. We are considering donating the existing one to the Smithsonian. Ha ha. We have a monthly total of $399.98, which was the low quote of the three. A one-time total of $35.50 for the charge to bring in the new phone systems. This will include 28 or 23, excuse me, eight lines. Some of the features that are desirable about this system is that it allows for voicemail to email interaction. It also allows us to forward to cellphones as well as do forwarding to departments that are off-site from the clerk's office. So it allows us greater compatibility with the different departments where we're at. Extra phones are provided at no additional charge. There will also be no downtime during the transition, so we're encouraged by that. I'm asking the council's approval for this for the amount of $35.50 at the one-time charge and in the reoccurring theme of $39.98. I've also discussed this with Karen.
Just meanwhile, we're bringing things up.
That we're bringing will stop. We've tried everything, exorcisms, everything.
I remember some days it just was endless.
Okay, just to clarify, the one-time total is 35 or 3,550, and the monthly total is 399.
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I just looked at this. Okay. My motion to approve.
So moved.
Been moved by Ms. Monroe. I have a second. Second by Mr. Githens. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you. The second request is a quote from Midwestern Engineers. We are in the season where we're starting to consider wastewater improvements and some additions out at the plant. We are asking that we provide this review. It will be a study of both the treatment process, equipment, anticipated future flows. It will both be looking at our staff and our master plans and giving recommendations for continued growth and possible improvements in that area. The total cost for this study will be $17,500. It's one that I find that will be valuable to make our decisions in terms of how we're going to increase or maintain capacity as well identify areas of opportunity that are cost-effective for improvements out at the plant. Bob and I have discussed this. We've discussed it with Karen in terms of the funding, and I ask the council's approval for the $17,500.
What's it being paid out of?
Superdor. Thank you.
I motion we approve the contract with Midwestern and pay the funds out of sewer plant fund.
Ms. Monroe makes a motion to approve the contract and money from the sewer fund. A sir, a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Githens. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign.
That study, that's an excellent question. I don't have that. They didn't include the date, but that's one that I'll make inquiry now that it's been approved. You're welcome to make a note of that. My last request tonight is from Zayner Excavating and discussing it with Bob Porter. He brought it to my attention. The amount is $56,775. The amount is for the removal of the cement, tearing out the concrete, as well as two grease traps, tearing out asphalt, bringing in 20 loads of black dirt, grading and seeding. The property is located at the old, I call it the old Pinder's Restaurant, but on Davis Street, near Ohio and Main Street there. They would leave a 30-foot perimeter of cement around that area for parking, but we'd like to return that back to a blank slate of grass. That's an area also identified as a possibility for future improvements or redesigning going with the dunes project and something we've been studying with the make-up traffic study as an area that's going to be redesigned. So that extra 30 foot around that area is also going to leave room. If we do need to negotiate those streets or realign them, that would provide the room necessary to do that without damaging the grass or paying for something twice, so to say. I have spoken with Bob about this as well as talked to Karen about the funding and did you want to?
I can, yes.
Yeah.
We'll get from the street department since it at this point, I would recommend going ahead and moving forward with it just and we'll see where we end up towards the end of the year. We may or may not have to do the shore appropriation kind of just depending on funding, so.
So you can move from one line item to the other if necessary.
Or, you know, maybe paving gets pushed off for a little bit, so.
Okay.
The dollar amounts $56,775. And then the identification is also. But I'll move that over for your consideration.
Kevin, do you know if Bob has plans to apply for CCMG in the fall?
He does, and he is currently doing it.
Okay.
So we are waiting to hear back. He's, we're in the middle of the process for a second. So this first round of paving will be finishing up 2023, and then we're applying for the 2024.
That'll probably happen in the spring.
That's right.
Okay.
May I have a motion to approve this Zayner Excavating proposal of $56,775? It's been moved by Ms. Monroe. May I have a second, please? Second by Mr. Neer. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
I think he knows for that. Moving past the quotes, I have, in cooperation with Jeff and the EMS staff, developed the director of, for the EMS job description. I've emailed the council copies of this. I'm also providing hard copies for your reading if you prefer that. I would like for you to consider this job description. Please provide feedback and email it to me. I'd like to be incorporating that out and get this job description posted by at least the first week of March. So if we could finish up by the last week of February here, it'd be greatly appreciated. I'd like to put candidates in front of the council in early April at the latest. We've had two internal applicants, both qualified, and I'm excited by them, and I'll leave a little suspense to it, not name them right now. Currently, I'm working on a code of ethics following Ms. Monroe's suggestion during the work session. I have been researching examples and drafted the town of Culver. I'm putting the finishing touches on it probably tomorrow and Monday, and it should be available, and I will email the council that code of ethics for your consideration and feedback as well next week. Interesting some of the examples I've come up with. Some reminders that I wanted to share. I'm very excited. Saturday, the 24th at 10:30. I'm not excited by the weather. They're forecasting sub-zero. Wind chills possibly, just only in Indiana. It's the dedication of the historical marker on School Street, representing the first integrative team in Indiana from 1921 to 22 when Charles Wade and Palmer Widded joined the team. And that's something a lot of people don't know about Culver, and that's something that we should take great pride in. Also, this is a great one, the high scorer, Herman Sager, Sager, on 3 March 8th, 1913, against the Winna Mac, probably not Warriors at the time, scored 113 points. That is a record in the state of Indiana. And I want to share the final score with everybody. The final score of that victory was 154 to 10. I wish there was a survivor of that Winna Mac team so I could ask him, what made you keep going? That is resilience by definition, kids. Last thing, indulge my patience or your patience here. I'd like to share a letter written February 13th, 2024. It was sent to Bob Porter and the utilities from the town of Culver. Dear sir, just a quick word of appreciation for the services rendered by your office staff and the Culver Water Department. Couple of weeks ago, I discovered a leaky shut-off valve that needed to be replaced in the basement of my mother-in-law's, or no, excuse me, mother's home at 215 West Washington Street. I called the town hall office and talked to a pleasant fellow by the name of Kevin. Must be another guy that works here, I believe. He said that there would be someone there about 2 o'clock to shut the water off at the street. Through his word, at 2 o'clock, a young man named Josh showed up, and another water department employee located the shut-off only to discover that the housing around the valve had been damaged and needed to be repaired before it could be shut off and allowed me to make the necessary repairs inside the house. Since it was 4 o'clock, Josh apologized and said that he would have to come back the next day, which was Friday, with a bigger truck and more crew. He seemed a little worried and asked if everything in the house would be okay until the return that morning, next morning. I was impressed by his concern. I thanked him and assured Josh that everything would be all right. First thing in the morning, Josh was back with a much bigger truck and three more workers. They worked diligently until the repairs were made and the water was able to be shut off at the street. However, at that point, Josh went above and beyond the volunteering to inspect my plumbing, which I appreciated. When he noticed that there was no backup valve, check valve, in the line at the meter in the basement, he provided one from his truck and showed me how to properly install it. I can't say enough about this young man's plumbing talents or his published relation skills. He is a real asset to your organization. If I seem a little taken by all of this, it's because my wife and I moved back to Marshall County about three years ago from Indianapolis where it took an act of Congress, might be an exaggeration, to get the utilities department to respond to requests, sometimes even emergencies from residents. I guess I just had forgotten what small-town hospitality looked like. In my opinion, as a retired military public affairs officer, Josh and his crew need to be recognized for conducting themselves in such courteous and professional manner. I even tried to tip them for their excellent work, but they graciously declined, thank goodness, and said they wouldn't, couldn't accept it. Wow. I'm pretty sure this wasn't simply an isolated incident. I get the impression they practice these admirable values and work ethics every day. You are truly blessed to have these folks in your employment. Michael Craig, 10-8-1-9 Cardinal Circle, Plymouth, Indiana. And he thanks us. P.S. If you would, sir, could you please pass this letter to Josh's immediate supervisor? It is nice. Everyone's. Greatly appreciated. This is obviously highlighting the utilities. I could probably solicit the same letters for all of our departments. Every single one of them with the highest professionalism and courtesy to the public, and I appreciate all of our departments. Thank you.
Anything else?
That is it, sir, for the night.
Thank you. Department head report, EMS.
Yes.
Yes.
For those of you who may not know me, I have a new face here. My name's Mike Hazelfeld, paramedic and training officer for Culver EMS. I brought you some 2023 all those for last year. So we had a total of 436 calls for service. Of that 436, 52% of those were transports to the hospital. Of that 436, 14% ended up being refusals, which would be like if somebody, if we get called to a residence or whatever and we think they need to go to the hospital, but they don't want to, they have the right to refuse. So that's what we see. In the category of a dry run or Lyftisit, 19%, and then fire assist, we had 15% of that 436. So that's kind of the numbers for 2023. Also kind of FYI, next week, we have some of our paramedics going through advanced cardiac life support classes as well as pediatric advanced life support classes, which all paramedics have to have those classes. Some of our medics there will be doing that next week.
Mike, from your experience, is that 14% refusals, is that pretty common? Or is that a high percentage or low or?
Actually, it's kind of low. You know, like our diabetics, we have a few diabetics in town. Usually those end up being refusals too, because we can go to the scene and with IV dextrose, we can fix their problem. There's really no reason for them to go to the hospital unless there's something else going on. So diabetics are usually refusals. Some car accidents, it's very minor. They don't want to be checked out at the hospital, and that is their right. Now, when we think they really need to go, we do everything in our power to try to talk them into going. But as long as they're of age and of sound mind, they can refuse.
Yeah, I just wondered if that was a.
I think it's actually a little low.
It's mostly St. Joe.
Pardon?
Mostly St. Joe.
Yeah. That's the majority of the hospital we go to. We do go to Rochester now and then, and then down to Winna Mac, and then very rarely South Bend Memorial, and that's for bad problems. If we can't get a helicopter, a lot of times we'll just go to that problem center straight from here. We don't really like to go there because that's probably a two, maybe a three-hour where we're not in town here. But that's where that patient needs to go. We'll just take them straight up to the hospital.
Any questions? Thank you very much for that report and the statistics. Fire.
I don't think I have anything for you tonight.
Thank you, Terry. Wayne?
No, I don't have it.
Nothing, please. Amber?
Um, we're starting to gear up for the summer, so I know you saw these. Hi, it has these. We got one. We're good. These were printed off, our summer guys. There you go. Yeah, we can do this. This is everything we have going on for this summer. The one specific item in this brochure that requires your guys' approval is every year we close for a day for just a staff appreciation day. I always do it on a day where we have nothing scheduled or everything's slow. And I'm proposing that be Monday, June 17th, that that be the one day this summer that we're not having staff at the park and we go and do something with the staff, so.
I'm motion to approve that the staff be allowed to do an appreciation day on June seventeenth. Park staff, I should say.
Ms. Monroe, excuse me, Ms. Monroe makes the motion that we approve June seventeenth for the Staff Appreciation Day. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Nero. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you. Other than that, we're just accepting applications, doing interviews. That's going really well. I stopped accepting applications for concession stand attendance. We're at the point where we're going to have to turn people away. We have so many, so that, that's good news. Our lifeguard, our lifeguards will be getting, or potential lifeguards will be getting certified starting March second, if that's a Saturday. So I'll be taking them through lifeguard certification through the next few weekends. So we have decent numbers there as well. So we're, we're pretty ahead of the game at the moment. So we feel really good about that.
Thank you. Anything else, Amber?
Other than that, we have our, I've been working out the details for the Easter egg hunt. One of the bigger events we do every year, that will be March thirty-first. It's at the Saturday before Easter. Going to be early this year, so hoping the weather works out. I, I started posting it on social media and everything. I'll get it out on TGL as soon as I sort through all the details. But that's what we're working on at the moment. That's all.
Thank you very much. Bob, are you on for utilities?
I am. I have nothing for you, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Bob?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone? Steve here for building commission.
I, Steve's asked me, asked me to read the building commission report with your indulgence. January twenty twenty-four, building permits applied for January three, three, excuse me. Fees for building permits and improved location applications. Culver received four hundred and seventy dollars in January. No updates on zoning ordinances, unsafe structures. I've identified two unsafe structures outside town limits. I'm working with the new county building inspector on these. Solar and battery ordinance teams, first meeting was February twentieth at five thirty. Due to a lack of attendance, no business occurred. It was overlapping with another meeting. I was given additional suggestions for members who will, or who I will reach out to, excuse me. T R C had one meeting in January. Zoning ordinance revisions were discussed during that meeting. The plan commission had one item on January's agenda, sixty-three two-three Redwood Road, petition to rezone property from S one A one, which appeared before the council this evening. The BZA had three cases on the agenda for the January meeting, nine-ten West Shore Drive. Cases for the two properties on College were withdrawn. Any questions for Steve? Is Steve online? He is not, so I'm not sure why he put any questions, but I'm not going to ask them. But I'm willing to communicate them.
I was just going to drop them a note at some point. Kevin, I saw that Plymouth and the county came to some sort of MOU agreement in the event that they're, one of the building, if one inspector or commissioner is out for a week or two, that they help each other out because it can really delay the permanent system, apparently, if, you know, one misses a week or two of vacation. I thought that looked like an interesting thing that we might think about doing too. Steve obviously has the experience to be able to do that and the knowledge. But we'll see if we can get a copy of the agreement. I thought that was kind of a nice collaborative way to cover because there's a shortage of people in that industry right now. So it could be helpful.
Thank you. Pre-commission. Yes. Okay, thank you. Clerk's report, Karen. Pardon?
Was there redevelopment commission?
Oh, anybody speaking on behalf?
Marty's here.
Oh, Marty, I'm sorry.
Marty, you was probably calling for the redevelopment commission. We just actually completed our February meeting a couple hours ago. We pre-scheduled it to right before the second town council meeting of the month to try and make it a little easier for both public and some of our members to, to attend. And it was a pretty boring meeting. Couple of highlights worth recording on. Amber did give us an update on Winterfest, and it was good update and then a good event. And we're very pleased with our support for that event. The second highlight is that our town manager, Kevin, negotiated a easement associated with the Howard property on the south end of the Dunes Project that was necessary in the commission. This evening approved the payment on that easement, so we're go with respect to that. That's it.
Thank you, Marty. I'm sorry, no. Clerk's report, Karen.
Have a couple of items, claims over twenty-five hundred for your approval. Motorola Solutions, six thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty-six cents, and that is the remainder of the radio equipment that was purchased and received earlier this year. F N H Dex and Landscaping, two thousand six hundred for the park, and they, that, that was for the removal of the business lights. Culver Youth Club, two thousand five hundred, that comes from Riverboat, and that is the contribution that the council committed to the Culver, I'm sorry, organization. And finally, E J Prescott Incorporated, four thousand one ninety-seven oh six, and that is for materials and supplies for the water.
Your motion to approve claims over twenty-five hundred dollars. Been moved by Mr. Githens. Second, please. Second by Ms. Monroe. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Thank you.
The second thing I have, I have a few more conflict of interest forms. One is for John Crist, who serves as a member and secretary of the Culver Board of Zoning Appeals. And he is a member of the board and chairman of the South Coast Max and Crackey Conservancy District. He has no financial interest as the board position is non-paying, but does negotiate with the town at rates for us to basically treat the ways. And then the second one is for, from Jenny Monroe. She serves names of contractors or vendors, Lakeside Consulting, BS Engineering, Culver Youth Club, United Way, Marshall County Crossroads, and also doing business at, or Marshall County Crossroads, which is also doing business as one of Marshall County. So, and then Dana had, will be turning one in to me, and I will just go and ask you to go ahead and prove it so I can get it taken care of on my end. But he serves on the board for the Culver Youth Organization.
Anything else with triathlon? Is that something to be, or?
He serves as a driver for the triathlon as well.
Motion to approve the conflicts of interests.
Will move.
Moved by Mr. Githens. Second by the chair. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
All those aye to Dana's. Did this get uploaded to Gateway, Karen?
It did get uploaded to Gateway and also turned into the.
Thank you.
The annual financial reports, I'm getting closer to the end of February, which concludes the month of, the two months of reports for the first part of the year. I do need someone, a volunteer, to review the, the annual financial report prior to the submission. I can tell you, I only have one section of seventeen done, and so hopefully by Monday I will have that finished. So if there's someone that would be willing to come in Tuesday or Wednesday to do so, it has to be submitted by February twenty-eighth.
It is not. I was going to say, I think I could come in early Tuesday, and then I go on vacation that night. So I'd have to do it Tuesday morning.
We can talk.
Okay.
And then every year, we are required to cancel warrants that are older than two years old. And so there are four warrants from two thousand twenty-one to be canceled, and I did provide you a list of those. If you go ahead and approve those, I will receive those warrants back into the funds that they became for me.
Are you going to cancel the warrants?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Githens. Second by Ms. Monroe. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Thank you.
I was in Indianapolis on Tuesday. I just wanted to provide you a quick update. I'm the president of the Indian League and the Wisconsin Press and Pressures, so I presided over our executive committee meeting Tuesday morning, followed by an AIM board of directors meeting, which I sit on as a board member of that group in the afternoon, and then attended along with Jenny that evening, the AIM legislative dinner. One of the things, as I put in my report, was just an encouragement that I heard throughout the day, was just to develop relationships with your, with our state legislators now, so that when there's an issue that comes up, that we are full-calling them, basically. So in that vein, I was going to try to reach out to State Representative Jack Jordan and State Senator Michael Hatchett, considering they would be willing to stop in at one of our councils, because I don't think that's you're right. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. On the attorney's report.
The only thing I had is I have the departments and board folks been informed about the changes to the agenda that they only need to be here on one meeting. I was not going to be presumptuous. I would give for the approval. I will be notifying them. I'm sure they will. They will be met with a huzzah.
Okay, great.
That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Utility shut-off and ordinance violation. Anyone in the room for either one? Anyone online? No? Hearing none. Citizen input. Anyone in the room for citizen input? Terry?
I do have one thing that I know the board had asked me to report on. If I haven't heard any more, the battery plant that was projected, they're actually at the county meeting tonight. So you guys know that this is the second time that they met. They're approaching them tonight, and I came here instead of there. And that's all I got to say.
All right.
You'll probably get out sooner than they will.
Anyone else? Yes, Amber?
I just wanted to say on behalf of the Culver and Lake Max and Crackey Visitor Center, anyone that came to Winterfest, donated, supported, participated, thank you very much. It was a really big success. So thank you, and Lake Fest is next on the agenda. And then I have our event magnets and visitor guide brochures, so in case you forget the upcoming events, I'll leave them out at the end.
Can I ask you a question? We were out of town. I know that the weather, the water, how did you adjust?
Yeah, I actually, yeah, we had a lot of people apologizing for the weather. However, we actually were excited about it. We get a bigger participation with nicer weather, as you can imagine. So our numbers were up. We had about, I hope I'm not wrong, thirty-eight people, forty for the five K. Yoga was packed. We didn't even have room for everyone. The Ice Spear Garden, very well attended. Polar plunge, we had about forty people do the plunge, run into the lake, well, registered. Fewer that like actually went in, but they registered, thirty, forty people registered. Other than that, we, we did have a little bit lower numbers for like Cupid's Crawl, and then people who actively made the chili, the same number as for people that ate the chili, but lots of people who made it. We had our postmortem meeting yesterday, so we had our discussions as to how to approach that for next year. But, you know, we had to adapt as to how we did the ice sculptures. They set some out Friday night, and then we put them back into a truck cooler at night, and then put them back out on Saturday. Stuff like that, but it really affected us, I think, in a positive way.
Any other citizen input? If not, council issues, Mr. Nero. Ms. Monroe.
I had one. I don't know if you guys noticed with the last commissioner meeting. So the county has requested an audit of Marshall County tourism. And if you're not aware, after the county commissioners passed an ordinance to restructure that organization, the next week, the tourism board cut checks and distributed countywide very large checks. And I know there's, there's an interesting way that they work with the money goes to the county. From the county, it goes to tourism. From tourism, I believe it goes to another nonprofit organization. And then that organization spends the dollars. So I, I don't know if they were intending on emptying their bank account before the new structure comes in. So in the meantime, the county has ordered this audit with state board accounts, which means it will get conducted if the county's requesting it. And I don't know if we need to be proactive ourselves and, and have some sort of executive session with legal counsel, or if we need to just monitor what's going to happen at the county level, because Culver was sort of left out of that check distribution. And then I know Amber made a request for funds after all this occurred. And then we later received a check that was dated back in January. So there's something a little amiss going on there. And I'm, I'm just notifying you because I don't know how many of you know about this, but I also think we should think about our own investment in this. We are obviously a tourism community. We have had an ongoing situation of trying to get the tourism board to fund our visitor center. As you all know, we've been funding our visitor center to quite a large amount of money every year between redevelopment and the council. As a result of that investigation and study of what was going on there, we figured out that statutes have changed, which is why we then approached the commissioners about changing the organization and match statute. Sean's somewhat aware of this because Plymouth was kind of supportive of changing the, the organization at the time. So anyway, a lot has occurred in that period of time, and we have no idea if they've emptied the the bank of all their funds. We don't know what organizations got the funds. From the little, we do know none of those organizations even requested funds. And as anyone can tell you who's received funds in the past, they have a policy for requesting funds. And I'm sure that under statute, they have to, they have to follow some of the public funds statutes, because that, that is a tax that's generated through inkeepers and Airbnb tax. So I think we should be concerned and stay on top of what's going on, whether that's through the county attorney or our own. It's just very disconcerting to find out that this has occurred, particularly because of the timing of it after they passed on first read that new ordinance to restructure that board.
So are you suggesting an executive session?
Um, I don't know. I, I think maybe we just have Sean monitor it, maybe with the county attorney, Jim, and kind of keep in the loop on it. And then maybe we consider our options if we think we need to do that. I just wanted to bring it to your attention in case you weren't aware of it.
Anything else?
That's all.
I have nothing. Bill? Nothing? entertain a motion to adjourn the claims. Will move. Mr. Githens moves to adjourn the claims. Second?
Yes.
No. Ms. Monroe seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Were adjourned.